Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 meeting. We begin our meeting with invocation from Pastor Leonard Himes, and then he will also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Good evening, let's pray together. Our Father, we are thankful tonight, Lord, as we enter this month of Thanksgiving. Lord, there's so many things to be grateful and thankful for, so we thank you for those. And Lord, we're thankful for government, knowing that you set it in place to govern and manage civil society and people in their lives, and we thank you for that. So Lord, this night, I ask you to meet with us in this place. There's business to be conducted, decisions to be made, and Lord, in those for the betterment of all people involved. So we invoke you, Lord, into this meeting and implore you to meet with us, help us, lead, guide, and direct. And Father, we'd be amiss if we didn't ask you to bless those that are out there even now protecting and serving in this Craig County, that we can live as a citizenry as you've, Lord, purposed. So help us tonight, be with us, we thank you and praise you for that, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order. I have a few announcements to make. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for the November 19th, 2024 BOC meeting have been postponed by the applicant. Those items of Comp Amendment 24-06 Strickland Road Farms LLC, RZ 24-20 Strickland Farms are Farms LLC, Comp Amendment 24-02 Rocky Creek LLC, and RZ 24-07 Rocky Creek LLC. All these items have been postponed, they will not be heard tonight. So if there is anyone here for those particular items, they will not be heard at this particular time. The... County manager, do... I need to give the directions for staff now, or do we wait until toward the end of the meeting with regards to the data centers?
You can wait until the end of the meeting, or if you want to do it at this point, you can do it at this point.
Okay.
But I also believe you have some additional items that you want to amend the agenda to add, that are walk-on items.
Correct. So... We will be moving from the consent agenda, the annexation will move to the regular agenda. The item under planning and zoning number E will also move to the regular agenda. We will walk on an item to add the name Registered Agent for first, for Henry First, will be added to the agenda under appointments. And then the direction to staff is to provide ordinance for data centers to be presented by the first meeting of January, and also to provide a resolution ordinance for comp plan amendments to only occur once a year, the second meeting in July. Those are two directives that we need staff to prepare. You have that, county manager?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So now we will begin with presentations regarding ClearGov, County Transparency Platform. Bernita? Amber?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. This evening, we'll be presenting a live demonstration on ClearGov, explaining the functionality and how to navigate through the site. I'm Bert Bivens, Assistant Director in the Splosh Department, and to my left is Ms. Bernita Campbell, Budget Director for Henry County. ClearGov is a software utilized by Henry County Government to provide transparent civic engagement related to county operations. ClearGov is accessible to the public, and citizens are encouraged to visit the site to gain the most up-to-date financial and splosh project data. Today's presentation will include a live demonstration of how to access the site, a brief overview of what information is included on the site, and how to subscribe for project updates. At this time, I'll pass the presentation along to Ms. Bernita Campbell, Henry County Budget Director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. As Mr. Bivens stated, today, we will be doing a live demonstration of our transparency software. So how, we'll start off with how to access it. So first, you go to the county website at henrycountyga.gov. You scroll down slightly, and here you click on Financial Actuals. This will take you to our ClearGov Transparency page, and as you can see, there's a menu bar near the top of the page, and it has six options for you to choose from. I'll briefly cover what is found under each option. The first option is Overview. As you can see, it gives a quick snapshot of the following sections. Demographic Snapshot, that includes the population, the median home value, and the median household income. And if you want to dig deeper into the demographic information, you just click here, and more detail will come up. Next, there's a section on Financial Overview. You choose which fund you would like to look at, and then you click on Revenues and Expenses, and it'll give you the details of our budget. Below that is a graphical representation from FY 2020 through FY 25 to show you our budget versus our actuals. And finally, on the Overview tab, there's a Project section. So the first three projects under Splosh are highlighted, and if you want to get a complete list of projects, you can just click the View All Projects. So next, we'll scroll up and take a look at our Dashboard tab. This is where you find the financial information. So we'll click on Monthly Budget Report. This shows you a snapshot of our actuals, monthly and year-to-date as of October 2024. This is the fourth month in FY 25. This will be updated by the 20th of each month, once we close out our actuals. So here you'll see we have our monthly actuals for revenues and expenditures for the General Fund, plus our Special Service Districts. And then you have year-to-date information, the available budget, the adopted budget, and then the percent received or used for each revenue category or expenditure function. Once you look here, if you want to dig deeper into any of these revenue categories or expenditures by function, you would then come to the tab up above and click either Revenues or Expenditures. So we'll take a quick look at the Revenues tab. Under Revenues, you can choose which fiscal year you'd like to look at. Again, you can choose the fund, it defaults to the General Fund. You can see our total budgeted and then our collected to date, and these are actuals through October 2024. It breaks the information down in a pie chart form, and it gives you the revenue categories and tells you the percent budgeted for each category. If you're interested in looking at any particular category such as taxes, you can scroll down, it'll show you our budget, it'll show you the per capita per year, and this is just taking the budgeted total and dividing it by our population of 240,000, and that tells you the per capita total per year for each category. And then you also have a graphical representation of actual versus budget for each fiscal year, from FY 2020 through FY 25. And then if you want to dig deeper into any particular category, you just click More Detail, and then it'll show you the accounts, the actuals, the year-to-date actuals, and the amount budgeted. And this is available for all categories. So this is Revenues. If you want to take a look at Expenditures, it's the same concept. You'll get a message that says, would you like to personalize this? You can put in your information based upon your tax bill. So you can put in the county portion of your tax bill, and it'll show you what you're actually contributing towards the expenses for any particular function. If you don't have your tax bill available, you can just click No Thanks, and it'll just use the population number to give you the per capita total for each category. So again, it defaults to General Fund here, we're on FY 25. You can see the total budgeted for the General Fund and the expended to date. It breaks it down by function, and then you can scroll down and look at any particular function that you'd like to look at. So Public Safety, and one thing to note on Public Safety, since we have the Special Service Districts, Police and Fire will not be shown in the General Fund, they're in their own Special Service District. So the way that you see those, you just click under the Fund. You scroll down, Police would be here, and Fire would be here. So in this particular application, there's no way to look at the General Fund plus the Special Service Districts combined. You have to look at the dashboard to get that information. You can't look at it combined through the tool here. But if you want to see which departments fall under Public Safety under the General Fund, you just click the View Breakdown. It will show you what departments make up Public Safety under the General Fund and what percent they represent. So for the first one, it's Corrections, you can just drill down into that. Again, this is just drill down, as far, as to many levels as you'd like to go. It shows you a graphical representation based upon Personnel Expenses, Contract Services, and Supplies. And you can just keep going further and further. The next section is the Demographics. So again, this is just more detailed information of what's already shown on the Overview. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Bivens, and he will take you through the projects.
So on the menu bar, if you would click on where it says Projects, on the Projects tab, this will indicate all of our current Splosh and T-Splosh projects, and it will break down all the various phases, you know, whether it's in Design, Right-Away Acquisition, Active Construction, whatever state of progress is in at the moment, it will update it every week or two to let you know what stage the project is in. It'll also let you know which projects have been recently completed. For the projects that have been recently completed, you will see updated photos showing, you know, the final product. For the purpose of this demonstration, we're going to use Flipping Road Extension. It's a project that just started about two months ago. And if you click on the actual image, it'll enlarge, and you'll get a good conception of where the project is located. You can see the yellow marker on the top side. Flipping Road Extension will go from that point where it deadens down north to Jonesboro Road and tie into North Mount Carmel. So the site is a very good tool to provide this type of insight, to let you know where the projects are going on and what's going to be taking place. And this particular project is going to really improve the north-south connectivity. It's going to relieve congestion around the Dutch Town School areas. So another thing that I strongly, and we strongly encourage you to do, is subscribe to project updates. If you're wondering how you subscribe to project updates, if you'll look on the screen, in the blue tab, it says Subscribe to Project Updates. Once you click on that tab, it'll ask you to input your email information. So you go in here and you'll type in your email information, and once you finish that, you'll hit Subscribe. Once you hit Subscribe, you'll start to receive email notifications on any significant progress that is made on that particular job. So if you're really concerned about what's going on with Flipping Road and you become a subscriber, it'll send email notifications to your email to let you know any time updates are being made. If you would like to engage further, well, first, let me go over some of the items that are shown on the site. It shows you the project expenditures, that's the projected expenditures, that's how much we estimated the cost to be, and the expenditures to date. So as I stated, this project is ongoing, and so we, 1.3 million out of 3.4 is what we spent so far, and it'll be updating as we make progress on the project. There are bar charts here to show you timeline, chronological timeline, from the design to the right-of-way acquisition. If you see, it's kind of notated in green, showing that the construction is currently in progress. So that's the actual, lets you know where we are currently today, the status of the project. Again, this just shows the general location of the project, so you'll know where the projects are taking place and how it may impact you as a citizen. The current updates, if you see, back to 2020, Flipping Road was designed, I forbid. You can go on down and see where the surveying started, where the preliminary plans began, the environmental. It's really detailed in the steps that we made to get to the point where we are now in actual construction. If you really would like to engage further, which we encourage you to do, if you scroll all the way to the bottom of the page, there's a section that says Sign In or Sign Up for, to join the discussion. And when you join the discussion, that allows you to ask questions, make comments, and those questions and comments are received by our staff, and they'll provide answers and responses to your questions and comments. So if you don't have a ClearGov account, you would just go to Sign Up, and it's going to ask you to input your email information, your first and your last name. You would designate a password, and once you do that, you'll be able to sign in and click Sign Up for, to make comments. So any project that you want to comment or ask questions on, our staff will provide updates on that information. This concludes our live demonstration. Thank you for your time. At this time, we'll take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just want to make a comment. This is very nice. I mean, we've had a lot of our constituents to call, and like, what is going on, what is going on? So how are we, outside of tonight, how are we letting the community know? Outside, because a lot of people don't be on our webpage, so how are we getting the word out so they'll know they can go and sign up for this?
I know that we have been taking some measures, like putting signage out with QR codes. If they want additional information about Splosh, or T-Splosh, or anything related to Henry County, they can go to that QR code. And so even if they're not thinking to go there, it kind of puts it in front of them to say, this is where you go to find this information. And once they go to the QR code, it will take them to the ClearGov site.
Okay. One last question, where are you placing these QR codes?
We have been placing them on signs all throughout the county.
In parks and stuff like that?
We've been putting them around parks, around senior centers, even around this area, highly traveled areas.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. Thank you very much. I know I requested that we do this at our last meeting, because it's, I think it's vitally important for the community. You know, we get a lot of questions, and sometimes we get people to say there's no transparency to budget, and they're asking for all sorts of audits and everything else. It's right there for you. You can go on it anytime you want to. I signed up for all of it, so of course, anything that's in my district, and even across the county, I sign up. So I just get emailed, anytime a dollar is spent, you get a notification. There's nothing easier than that. You don't have to call anybody, it literally will notify you wherever you are. So thanks, thanks again, appreciate the demonstration.
I think it's a great move and great look for the county. One of the things I think when we're in public office, to be transparent, and I think people need to be informed. So again, I'm excited about this move that Henry County has made.
Thank you.
The, one other request that I would have is that, could we put, can you do some flyers where we can put them inside of the senior centers and inside of our parks and rec and any other county facility that our, that the public enters? Then that way, you know, because everybody might not stop and scan a sign, but if, you know, we have a lot of seniors that go to the senior center every day, and if they've got a flyer that they can scan, and if we could do that, that would be helpful as well for us getting it out. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Next item on the agenda is Appointments. Hospital Authority Appointment. Submitted three names, Brenda Nish Willis, Mildred Smeltz, and Dr. R. Bott to fill the unexpired term of Tony Holmes, 12/7/2025. Can I get a motion to approve these three names to be submitted to the Hospital Authority for consideration?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. So next item is the Henry First. The Registered Agent for Henry First. Who's presenting that? This is a walk-on item on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board, Citizens of Henry County. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners appointing Amanda Reeves as the Registered Agent for Henry First Incorporated. Henry First Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization established in 2009, intended to be the vehicle through which county departments can apply for and receive grant funding or other donated, needed to carry out governmental functions. The state of Georgia requires every corporation, including nonprofit organizations, to designate a Registered Agent who is responsible for receiving legal and official documents on behalf of the corporation. Amanda Reeves has demonstrated the qualifications, expertise, and commitment necessary to serve as Registered Agent for Henry County First, sorry, Henry First Incorporated. Therefore, be it resolved by the Henry Board of Commissioners as follows. Appointment of Registered Agent, the Henry County Board of Commissioners hereby appoints Amanda Reeves as Registered Agent for Henry First Incorporated. Duties and responsibilities. Amanda Reeves as Registered Agent shall maintain a registered office in the state of Georgia as required by law, receive service of processed legal notice and official correspondence on behalf of Henry First Incorporated, ensure timely forwarding of all received documentation to appropriate representatives of Henry First. Effective date and term of appointment, this appointment shall be effective immediately and remain in effect until otherwise amended or rescinded by the Henry County Board of Commissioners or the Board of Directors of Henry First Incorporated. Authorization and implementation, the Henry County Administrator and other relevant county staff are authorized to take all necessary actions to implement this resolution, including updating any necessary state filings or record. Dated this 19th day of November, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, here are none. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item is our Consent Agenda. If we can have our county manager to please come forward and to read our Consent Agenda. We did remove two items from the Consent Agenda, and that was the annexation, the City of Stockbridge Annexation, as well as the resolution for the Airport Master Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of our community. Your Consent Agenda for Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:30 PM is as follows. Under the County Attorney, we have a resolution to accept the material terms of the new national opioid settlement reached with publics and actions needed to participant pursuant to the Georgia Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreements. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution to accept a deed providing for additional right-of-way along Chandler Road within unincorporated Henry County. We have a resolution authorizing speed humps to be installed in Browerwood Place subdivision, and we have a resolution accepting ownership of various public roadways not on the state highway system. Under E911 and Henry County Fire Rescue, we have a resolution approving a contract for nurse navigation telehealth services with Right Sight Health Physicians, PLLC, for non-emergency patients at no cost to the county. Under Fleet Services, we have a resolution approving a fuel intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough. Under Fire Rescue, we have a resolution for the purchase of two Sabre Customs BTO Pompers, two Sabre Stock Program Pompers, one Pierce Custom Heavy Rescue, two Braun Liberty Ambulances, and four Braun Liberty Ambulance remounts from 10-8 Fire and Safety LLC in the amount of $7,483,528. Funding will be from capital funds. Under Financial Services, we have an amendment of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Previous Resolution Number 24-250, awarding a three-year subscription to OpenGov utilizing Carisalt for the purchase of software and OpenGov for implementation in the amount of $824,440.5. in the amount of $824,440.5. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution by the Board of Commissioners to adopt the state-required Capital Improvement Element Annual Update NCIE Community Work Program. We also have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Kingston Phase 2A subdivision on Bill Gardner Parkway located in District 1. We also have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Broader Farms Phase 3 subdivision on Flippen Road located in District 2. We have a resolution authori- authorizing the negotiation and execution of a project development agreement with High Point Acquisitions, LLC, Inc., for the development of a North Bridges Road roadway improvements. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $3,000 from the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for the purpose of sustaining and maintaining the Henry County Police Department Explosive Ordinance Disposal K-9 program. Under Senior Services, we have a resolution authorizing Henry County Senior Services to apply for a private home care license from the Department of Community Health, DCH. This is a requirement for county agencies that receive Older Americans Act grant funds, and will enhance the quality of life for Henry County senior residents who require in-home services. Under SPOSS, we have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 14,480.78 square feet of right-of-way, 2,311.87 square feet of permanent easement, more or less in Land Lot 135 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation. This is for the State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 2. We also have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 229.85 square feet of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lot 136 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, again, for the State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 3. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 2,090.67 square feet of right-of-way, 1,582.67 square feet of temporary easements, more or less, in Land Lot 136 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, for the State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 4. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 1,001.88 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Land Lot 135 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 118. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 37,925.34 square feet of right-of-way, 4,141.13 square feet of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lot 135 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, again, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 5. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 21,767.98 square feet of right-of-way, 17,693.29 square feet of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lot 152 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 40. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 3,954.67 square feet of right-of-way, 2,575.52 of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lot 152 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel 47. We have a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 7,178.22 square feet of right-of-way, 14,309.37 of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lot 152 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel Number 50. Under the Stormwater Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for Greenwood, Greenview Subdivision Improvements in the amount of $23,381.46 using Stormwater Enterprise Funds. This project is located in District 4. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to purchase one Yancey Caterpillar Skid steer in the amount of $131,427, utilizing Stormwater Enterprise Funds. Under Transportation Planning, we have a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 24-226 and approving updated contract with Modern Mobility Partners, LLC, to prepare the Henry County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for $245,000 to be paid with $196,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All, SS4A Planning and Demonstration Grant with the $49,000 local match. This update clarifies that the local match will be equally split among Henry County and its four municipalities. $49,000 divided by five equals $9,800 each. And then the final consent agenda item is a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 24-227 regarding a contract with Sonomaure, Inc., for the purchase and installation of onboard units for the Henry County Fire Department Emergency Response Vehicles. This contract is being rescinded due to, due to the company's outsourcing to a third-party vendor who did not meet the Made in USA grant requirements. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Got a second. Is there any questions?
I have.
Commissioner Wilson?
Under Fire Rescue, says the purchase of $7.4 million for all the equipment was coming from capital funds. Are we looking to purchase any, all of this, or purchase and lease some of it? Because I know the last round, we leased the equipment. So we're looking to purchase this or lease it?
It is my understanding that we're purchasing, but I will defer to our CFO.
Is it purchased, all of it?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Henry County community. With response to your question, Commissioner Wilson, it is our intent to purchase these outright. We did lease primarily from PNC, the last purchase that we made. But the goal is to purchase outright. If you ask me from a conservative standpoint, I prefer to be leasing everything that we do. So I will be taking a look at, once we buy it, I will be taking it, a look at trying to lease the other equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I just got one comment, and on that same part of the resolution for Fire Rescue is, unless you looked inside the details, you don't have to get back up here, David. It's okay. This is a, this is a thing just to let folks know of. Because of our replacement program and the good work that the staff has done, Fire Chief Burnett, and us passing that replacement program, there is a prepay in there where we have saved $405,000 on this equipment. Unless you got in the details, y'all wouldn't know that. But that's good work on the staff on behalf of this county. So thank y'all.
So I got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, have our county attorney to come forward, an ordinance amendment, reference the election board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and members of the community. This is an ordinance to amend Section 3-2-57 of the Code of Henry County, Georgia, and that code section governs the Board of Elections. And as the board knows, in 2006, the General Assembly passed SB 278 to establish the Board of Elections. There was a subsequent amendment to that act in HB 1043. The act was actually codified in the county's code, so we are amending the county code to improve the operations of the elections board. There are two amendments that are being made. The first one is to Paragraph 14, and the only amendment to that section is for the meeting place. Originally, the meeting place was supposed to be at the courthouse, and the meetings have not been held there. So they need to be held at the Board of Elections and voter registration office. So that change has been made. And then Paragraph 15 is changed so that the Board of Elections can make an appointment of the election supervisor, but with the approval of this board, the Board of Commissioners. And there are various other changes in that section related to the appointment and possible resignation, termination, or other unseating of the election supervisor. The primary difference is that the election supervisor now becomes an employee of the county, and currently, the election supervisor is not an employee of the county.
So I guess I'm trying to understand, are we trying to, what exactly are we trying to do?
We're amending the code so that the, the model for the hiring of, hiring and supervision, actually, of the election supervisor, now the Board of Commissioners actually has involvement in that process, versus having it rest solely with the Superior Court as it currently does.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
So the Superior Court Judge would no longer be in charge of the election director?
Correct. He would no, he would no longer be in charge of appointment, or termination, or selection of an interim or replacement. That's correct.
So that position would fall under HR?
That's correct. And the position would report to the county manager as any other employee on that level.
Okay. Any other question? All right. Then I, I call for a motion to approve.
I do have one question. So I know it currently stands, the board supervisor has to reside within Henry County. Is that still going to remain the same?
That will not be the case. And the reason it, well, two things. One, by not requiring that position to be resident within the county, you actually broaden your pool of applicants to fill the position. And second, because they're an employee of the county, there's questions whether you can actually require that position to be a resident, because they're appointed, not elected.
So they will go through the same hiring process as any other employee of the county?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
I guess I do have one more question. So with that being said, if, because I, I do actually like the board supervisor to have some sort of independence. To me, this just kind of begs the question if, if the board supervisor becomes an employee of the county, just, just a notion of impartiality. So I just want to bring that point up.
So, so are, are there any other counties that do it this way?
So yes, so two, two things I would answer.
Chair Harrell's question, but just a point of clarification. The election supervisor is currently an employee of the county. The only difference is the appointment is made by the chief's Superior Court judge. So the Board of Election Supervisor has all the rights and privileges of a county employee outside of who hires, fires, and performs any type of disciplinary action for that individual. They pay into the county's pension, they're on-boarded, the exact same process. To Chair Harrell's question, there are other counties, we actually looked at other counties, because this question has come up before, that in, in terms of their reporting structure, the closest one is FED County, where their election supervisor does report to their county manager. But there are also other counties where the election supervisor does report to the Board of Elections.
And if I may, Madam Chair, although, although the model with the way the election supervisor is on-boarded, and all of the other, you know, benefits that that supervisor has, from the statutory standpoint, they, the statute doesn't support that they are actually an employee of the county. So that's, there's a disconnect between the current law and the actual fact of the matter. Because the county manager is correct, anytime anyone has that level of control over when and where, and benefits that accrue to an employee or to, you know, an individual, the IRS is going to look at them like they're an employee and not an independent contractor.
Well, given all of the issues that we've had over the last several years, and, and having that under the Superior Court Judge has not necessarily been in the best interest, I guess, of being able to do any type of replacements, or, I mean, you receive county benefits, but you, you have no supervision to govern you.
Correct.
So you can decide to do your job or not do your job. And we have no recourse, the way it currently is.
The way it's currently written. That's correct.
If I may, Chair, if I may, for the county attorney, if you believe that it's still -- Will provide the Board of Elections with some insight in this process. I believe they are a part of the process. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the board, the Board of Elections actually will make recommendations to this board, and then this board has final approval over the election supervisor selection.
Okay. That makes more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'd like to, I guess, call for a motion to approve the ordinance amendment, reference the election board.
I move to approve.
Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have a comment. This is a big move for, the move from the judge to the county manager's office. That's a big, that's a big move. But once we make this, once we make this motion, and this is approved, there's no going back to put it up under the Board of Elections, correct?
Well, it's
Unless this board chooses to do that.
Well, I think she said the Board of Elections.
Makes the recommendation.
Correct.
But once, once this resolution is approved, there's no going back. Don't let the Board of Elections make that selection and approve the. So, once we do this, I'm, I'm not real clear of exactly how other people do it, other than she said FED County. I'd like to know more about how other counties operate under their Board of Elections versus the Board of, well, the county manager. I'd like to know more about that. So I can't, I can't vote on that tonight.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just, just as the board is considering an ordinance to amend what's currently in place, if at some point additional amendments are required, then those can be brought before the board, and you can vote on those as well. So this isn't a once and done, is what I'm saying.
You're saying it is?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying it's not?
It's not once and done.
So that's clear, so everybody here can understand that?
Yes.
But you did say the Board of Elections will make, will, will choose the person, right?
Correct.
And then will, they'll bring it to us, and if we disagree, then we can disagree, right?
Correct.
Okay. So everybody's accountable.
That's correct.
So nothing is, like, nailed in stone? I mean, there can be amendments.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. So we got a motion and a second on the floor?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. Madam Chair, who made the second?
Uh, Price.
So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Price to abstain from voting since he is
So I'm going to ask Commissioner Price to abstain from voting since he is currently a candidate on the ballot, and I just think that would certainly be cleaner since we're making changes to the election process.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Okay. So we got a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll make the second.
So we got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor. Those that oppose, and Commissioner Price has to abstain.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution authorizing use of county-owned property for the construction of tiny homes at a Friends House. Serena and Aubrey.
No. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Tracy, our executive director for Friends House, and I'm Aubrey, the board chair. We are here this evening to request a resolution. Am I going to introduce that or you?
I'll introduce it.
So, so I'll let you do the resolution while Jamie's trying to get her presentation together.
This is a resolution to authorize the board to negotiate and execute an agreement with a Friends House to build a tiny home community on county-owned property. And I'll let a Friends House describe what the project is, what it entails. But it does support their mission to provide housing to an underserved population within the county.
A Friends House, as you know, has been a nonprofit since 1998, serving our communities abused and neglected foster children. We currently have 24 youth aged 12 to 21 at our campus right next door, right across the street. In 2023, we cared for 136 children, equating to 7,948 nights of care. We, children are in our, children and teens are in our care due to abuse, the death of a parent, incarceration, neglect, abandonment, sex trafficking, or drug abuse. They are not set with the necessary skills to successfully function on their own, especially when aging out of generational brokenness. We plan on ending the cycle, and I do have a copy of this, since the presentation's not up, if I can give that to y'all.
This time.
Would that be helpful? Don't want to waste time, I'm sorry.
Stephanie, can you?
This was, this has been a project for about two years now. Finding the right parcel of land has been a struggle, as several of you know. We are, we would like to open a transitional living community, which will be licensed under our current, it would be joined with our current license. We will prioritize education, including financial literacy, job readiness, and vocational training. By equipping our youth with essential skills, we will empower them to make informed decisions, pursue higher education, and gain employment, thus reducing their risk of homelessness. We prioritize mental health support by providing onsite supplemental therapeutic services and eliminate gaps in psychiatric care and therapeutic care. Aging out of foster care should not be an option for our youth who are not prepared to care for and support themselves. So a Friends House wants to change the narrative because our kids have already been failed once and we cannot fail them again. We would like to bridge the gap and champion an end to youth homelessness by creating an affordable and stable housing program that caters to the unique and vulnerable needs of young adults aged 18 to 21 years old that are either aging out of foster care or homeless. The program, the program will create success, access to services that will teach participants the skills needed to become self-reliant adults and create a plan to achieve long-term Each tiny home will be complete, thank you, yes. There's our little building. It's much bigger than it looks on that screen. It's a, over 20,000 square feet. That, these are our program accomplishments I've gone over. That's the cycle of brokenness of why kids enter foster care. Our accomplishments, academic, therapeutic. This is the model of our tiny home that we are looking to pursue. Each tiny home will be equipped with a bed, small kitchen, eating area, and a bathroom equating to a manageable living space. Our goal is to not only provide these young adults with a house, but a community atmosphere encouraging interactions with others that have had similar life experiences while teaching them the skills needed to become self-reliant adults and create a plan to achieving long-term In Georgia, 82% of our teenagers elect to sign themselves out of foster care at 18 years old. When they age out of care at 18, without the necessary support and resources available, 70% of young women become pregnant before 21, 60% end up sex trafficked or voluntary turn to sex work to support themselves, 20% instantly become homeless, and 50% within six months. 35% will be incarcerated within two years. Only 53% graduate high school, less than 3% earn a college degree, and 10% are dead before their 21st birthday. We want to prevent our Henry County kids from becoming a statistic. And this is just an impact shared about, about a Friends House from a group of siblings' mother. We are doing the work that many, that the board here, the Board of Commissioners, 29 years ago helped start. It is, we, the lands that a Friends House currently occupies does have a radio tower on it, as you know, butts up to the Haven House, and there are, I'm unsure if the fire department is still using that parcel as a training facility or not. So the placement of the homes will be, we will need county assistance with to make sure it is suitable. But that's our plan. I would like to start with a trial of one. It will construct, it will cost approximately $50,000 to construct one. We have raised the money for that. I would like to eventually go to five and then 15. We have, over the last year, identified a minimum of 17 youth that would qualify for this program. But because a Friends House is a locked-down, somewhat sort of facility, as soon as they're 18, they want to sign themselves out of care. And then they end up very often sleeping in their cars at Walmart or going back to their abused family members. Did I miss anything? Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
A Friends House will be, we will be funding and maintaining the homes ourselves. We will be constructing the homes ourselves. That is not something we're asking for county money at this time. We're just, permission to use the land that we already occupy.
I do have a question, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. The question, once they age out and they sign, like, once you do the tiny homes, and they sign to be a part of the program, what, I guess, are they going to sign some sort of obligation or contract with you to, for whatever it is, behavior?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Our model is the, there's three different phases, and they get placed into, they have to either be in, we're creating a, a plan for long-term success, so whether that's you're in trade school, you're in college, or you have a full-time job, you will be paying rent that will go into an escrow account. After you meet your goals and you're able to then be self-sustained, you're able to take care of yourself, whether that be getting an apartment or purchasing your first home, you will get that money back after reaching your goals. So a Friends House maintains that money in a, a sort of an escrow account for that child that they pay their rent, whether it be $100 a month, $75 a month, or $300 a month. We do have partners that have verbally committed to matching that amount as well. So we just need to gain a little momentum and start going.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. So I keep hearing y'all reference parcel of land y'all already have. Is it on the current campus that y'all currently have?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. And then I think I heard you say a maximum of, what, 15 maybe?
That was the goal. I'm unsure if 15 will fit there with the location of the radio tower.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? You know, I mean, I think you guys are doing an amazing job with a Friends House and our foster care children that are in the system. It's sad that there are not resources for them once they age out of foster care, and you all would be giving them the opportunity to become successful and sustainable adults in our community. We have a problem here in the county, and a lot of people don't want to admit that we have a homeless problem, and we have almost 2,000 children in our school system that are homeless. And so we got to do a better job.
Absolutely.
And so I thank you for stepping up to do that job.
And our goal is not just to serve children in foster care and the youth of a Friends House, but we have had several teenagers knock on our doors who are homeless. And so we want to broaden our license to not just serve eight youth, young adults under 21 who are in foster care but are also homeless through no fault of their own. We get calls all the time from the school systems of someone turning 18 who's going to be homeless, or a young adult who's currently has nowhere to go. And this, this, we want to help meet that gap, meet that need of the youth, of youth homelessness with this program, so.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to call for a motion to approve a Friends House.
I move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution of the board to approve the list of roadways for use of speed detection devices. If we could have our deputy director, David Simmons, come forward.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, pillars of the community. As stated, this is a request for resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve a list of roadways for use of speed detection devices. Periodically, there's a need to update the list of roads for use of speed detection devices. Upon adoption, approval by the Board of Commissioners of the roads to be added and revised, the Georgia Department of, should be Public Safety, will review and issue a permit that for law enforcement personnel to use detection devices on the roadways on the approved LOR, LOR being list of roads. For off-system roadways, which are non-state routes, speed limits may now be established by county resolution. That used to not be the case. Used to be, when we wanted to look at setting speed limits on roads, I'd have to send that list to Georgia DOT, they would ride the roads and come back to me as to whether they were in agreement or not and proposed different speeds. So now you can do it by resolution, so long as it is off-system. Or there's another thing called US Limits, which basically is basic, like 85th percentile speed assigned to the road. So the road segments to be approved are shown on Exhibit A and Exhibit B. A would be the road segment additions, and Exhibit B would be road segment revisions. I have the proposed overall list of roads attached as Exhibit C with all proposed changes to off-system roadways reflected in Exhibit A and Exhibit B incorporated into the document. And what I did here is I put on the roads that are new, where we are looking to add these to the list of roads for the road segments and its speed limits. You'll see there, there's portions of Bridges Road, Elliott Road from East Lake to Crumley that wasn't on the, on the radar list before because it was dirt road, but now it's paved. I've also looked for other areas where roads may be missing that are not on the list, and you'll see there, King Mill Road, which is kind of the industrial section between 155 and 42, McDonough Parkway north of Jonesboro, New Hope Drive, and a portion of New Hope Road that Splos paved a few years ago that reaches down to Peaksville Road, as well as Peaksville Road itself, a recent dirt road paving projects, and looking to add Reagan Road, as well as a school zone for Reagan Road for Pleasant Grove Elementary. And you'll also see South Bethany Road, particularly south of Cohen, was not on the list, and I was looking to add that in there, as well as a section between Old Jackson and 81, piece of Southampton Road, and Wilson Drive, and that's out between Northola and Upchurch. And also, we've got an elementary school on Willow Lane, so we are proposing a school zone there for Birch Creek Elementary for 35 miles an hour. The road typically is 45, so the 35 would be between hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM and 2:00 and 3:00 PM. And on Exhibit B, if you look in your handout, it's multiple pages. It's, and a lot of this was me going through the various jurisdictions, municipalities, looking at their list of roads, and just trying to make sure when we overlap or, or make sure we do reach and not leave a void in the middle, or where we do overlap, that we agree with what they've got for uniformity. I didn't list all of those roads on PowerPoint, I just picked out some roads on here to point out. We're going to look to change some speed limits on East Lake Road. East Lake, 155 to 20, that stays 45, but the, really the change is from 20 to Harper, lots of driveways. We're looking to reduce that from 45 to 35. And then East Lake Road from Harper Road out to Northola, I think it's currently 50. A few years ago, it's 55, and my intent was to try and get it to 45, so I'm going to look to drop that to 45. North Mount Carmel, in discussion with PD, they felt like 35 mile an hour, miles per hour would be a better speed for that road. That's between Mount Carmel and Jonesboro. And West Village is a recent Splos project, and between an older section and their section, the speed limits are kind of up and down. Their speed limit signs out there, 40, a 45, and a 35. So what I've looked to do there is get it more uniform. From Clayton County line up near Oden Road, 40 miles an hour, and then basically from there to Fairview, a uniform of 35 miles an hour. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you to David. I know that's a lot of work, and there's some on East Lake Road we have been talking about for a while, so.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Here and now, I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing, resolution of the Board of Commissioners to rename a portion of Peaksville Road as Roy Cune Drive.
Yes. Good evening again. Yeah, as stated, this is renaming a portion of Peaksville Road as Roy Cune Drive, and I'm sure if family may correct me if I said that wrong. But as part of a Splos project recently for phase two of Peaksville Road, a remnant portion of Peaksville Road was left to the south of the, of the Splos project that people travel, the majority of the people travel today. What remains is a remnant portion, remains in place, and staff recommends changing the road name for improved road name for improved clarity on road names in the area. There are three properties along the old section road to be renamed. All street addresses will remain the same. And DOT has notified affected property owners by mail and by legal advertisement and Henry Herald, and you'll see better here. What you see kind of in red is the new roadway. You'll notice it, when it gets to Old Jackson, it aligns with existing Peaksville. Before, we had an offset intersection. So, what's in kind of a light blue there is the remnant, and it comes off of Sunset Drive out to the west, and before it gets to Old Jackson, it terminates into a cul-de-sac. And that is the section, the blue section, that we are looking to rename from Peaksville Road to Roy Cune Drive. And there's three owners that join it. You'll see that there. Owner C is actually Henry County, and I think the rest are part of the Cune family, I believe. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Okay, so before we take any questions, we'll just go into the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to come and speak in the public hearing to address the board with regards to the name change? Any other family members here?
Yes.
Come on up. Okay, you have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Not sure if I'm gonna be able to make it through this, but good evening. My name is Jennifer Cune McAfee. I'm sorry. And I'm here with my mom tonight, Linda Cune. And we really appreciate the time that you all have given already in consideration of the proposed name change. My father, Roy Henry Cune, was born in April of 1940 on that land in my grandparents' home. He was raised his entire life. He lived on that land for 82 years until he passed away in December of 2022. To say my dad loved his family is an understatement. He filled that property and being there his whole life filled him with so much pride and joy. He was a people person. He never met a stranger. While his official job for 32 years was with Ford Motor Company, he worked two to three jobs his entire life. Even though he worked a lot of hours, he still made time to serve others and be proactive in our community. He was an active member of Philip High Baptist Church on Old Jackson Road and served as a deacon for 30 years. He, just as you all, served as a member of the Henry County Board of Commissioners in 1984 time period. He was also a founding member and director of the First National Bank of Henry County that was established in 1990. He lived a very full life, and he was proud to be a part of the community, and he truly loved his homestead on Peaksville Road. It would be an incredible honor for our entire family to have this portion of Peaksville be renamed to Roy Cune Drive. It would truly mean the world to us. A special thank you to Johnny, Commissioner Johnny Wilson, for navigating and guiding us through this process, and I appreciate all of your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Now open up for any questions or comments from the board. Commissioner Wilson?
Like Jennifer said, Roy never met a stranger. I walked up in his driveway probably 10 years ago. He didn't know me from anyone. But he welcomed me in. We sat in the swing. We talked about, we talked about his family. We talked about all the jobs. We talked about his gun collection. For hours, sitting out there in the swing. So, anyway, you're right. He never met a stranger. So, I would make a motion to approve.
So, we got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I know this is not on the agenda.
Come on, David.
Had I put it on the agenda, he would not have come to the meeting.
I'd have a dinner.
Oh, no. I know. Well, those condemnations were not yours, but I'm gonna try to make it through this very quick appreciation to David Simmons. I think, David, you and I started about a month apart.
About the same time.
But David has decided that he wants to retire, and so today is officially his last meeting of the board. His last day will be on Friday, the 22nd. But everybody in Henry County should know David Simmons because he has been the man behind all things roads, and I am truly going to miss David. David and I disagree on a lot of things, but the one thing he will do is take care of any county or city road against my wishes a lot of times, but he will do it. And so, David, we appreciate you. You, even today, we had an email that came through for a new school. I don't know if I can talk about it, but he went ahead and gave me a whole synopsis on it. He's working as if Friday's not his last day, and that just speaks to his commitment to Henry County. So, David, I have to personally say thank you. The Commissioners don't want you to leave. I don't want you to leave, but I know you're leaving because you came to the retirees meeting today.
Yeah. Seven years too early.
Yeah, yeah, so, but boy.
We're not accepting.
We cannot. We cannot. So, I just wanted to take this time, and I know he will not be a stranger to the county, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
David, I'm gonna still call you and ask you a question. So, we have a couple of items that we moved from, wait a minute. Are you, okay, we're gonna let you do yours. Okay, I'm sorry. The annexation of City of Stockbridge. Okay, we need to do that. Or we can do, I mean, which one do y'all have pulled up? And then, Lynn, you get, I don't know who's doing, no, Kamal's doing the master plan for the airport. Who's doing that? Okay, Tusa. Okay, all right, cool.
Kent is ready. Are you ready, Kent?
Yes, ma'am.
Just one moment. Good evening, Chair, board members, and citizens of Henry County, Pillars of the Community. The item before you is for an annexation request submitted by the City of Stockbridge for property located east of Highway 42 North and Campground Road, 48.597 plus or minus acres. Subjected properties are currently zoned RA, residential, agricultural, and due but City of Stockbridge properties. Future land use map designation is high-density suburban, supporting a density of up to eight dwelling units per acre nets. This is the site plan that was submitted with the annexation request by the City of Stockbridge. That application was received via certified mail on October 22nd of this year. Included in the applicant's request was a rezoning request from RA, County RA, to City PUD Planned Unit Development for a 243-unit development consisting of 101 single-family detached units and 142 townhome units. Density indicated on the site plan is 6.34 dwelling units per acre. With that application, there was an associated comprehensive plan amendment request to change the future land use map designation from County High Density Suburban to City Medium Density Residential. That city designation has a density limitation of 7.99 dwelling units per acre, whereas our County High Density Suburban, again, has a limitation of up to eight. The requested rezoning and change in the future land use map designations from County to City are comparable as it relates to use and density thresholds, and with that, staff's, it is staff's opinion that the annexation request would not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and future land use map designations of the properties as long as that density limitation does not exceed eight dwelling units per acre. Thank you so much, and be happy to take any questions.
Okay, then, I'm sorry. What was staff's recommendation?
It is of staff's opinion that the annexation request would not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses and future land use map designations for those properties so long as that density does not exceed eight dwelling units per acre. It is staff's opinion that there is not items in staff's evaluation that would warrant a, not, no objection to it.
Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
Good evening, Kent. I have a question. So, the, you're saying that the City of Stockbridge submitted an annexation request with this site plan in tow, so do we know who that site plan was submitted by or what developer that is?
The engineer for that site plan is PEC Plus. Meritage Homes is the applicant for that.
So, had they previously applied to the county or?
They have not applied to the county. There was no zoning history associated with this request. I will say Meritage Homes does have some developments across 42 along Campground Road at this time, and those are within the city.
You're saying on Campground Road?
Yes, ma'am. Along Campground Road, Meritage Homes has a few developments within the city.
And that was going to be my question. Do you know why they didn't submit it to us as opposed to Stockbridge?
Rather, they submitted to Stockbridge rather than us.
Yes.
I do not have a reason. It was not disclosed as part of the application.
Commissioner Wilson?
So, on the 42 corridor, they don't fall into the highway overlay?
It would fall within the highway corridor overlay district with our standards in place.
Commissioner Ayman?
I got just a couple of comments. It feels like this happens because they want to skirt around y'all's great work that y'all do here at the county. I'm definitely the one that asked for this to be moved from the consent to the regular agenda because I have concerns about how that's being handled with the city annexation and then us having to take those annexations back. They're de-annexing from the city. So, with that, I'm against.
So, what happens if we deny it?
That would be a, the board would object in that event of the annexation request. It would go back to the City of Stockbridge for litigation.
County manager?
So, Madam Chair, one of the things that we have been working with our lobbyists on is the annexation and the annexation laws, and so that is something that we have been trying to at least get the state delegation to look at modifying because currently, as de-annexations, it's a lot of ambiguity in that language, and it doesn't give the local government a lot of authority to object to these annexations. And so, the challenge we have is our current service delivery strategy spells out how we will review annexation requests, and if it meets that criteria, staff is gonna always bring forth to you all a recommendation if they're not admitting the comp plan, if they're not asking for a rezoning change. And so, it's challenging because we don't have a lot of room to object to those annexations. I do believe that if we object, there is an arbitration period, and I'll defer to, I think she's nodding the county attorney, but that would be the approach in terms of the county objecting. But I do believe because staff has recommended approval, the grounds for, did staff recommend approval?
Not approval per se, but no grounds for objection.
No, so staff has supported the request, and so that's gonna be the only challenge with that.
My only concern again is the fact that if it's the same type of development, why go to the municipality as opposed to here?
Excellent question. I unfortunately don't have an answer to that.
Is there a motion to approve the annexation? Is that correct, Stephanie, what I'm asking? A motion to approve the annexation? County manager, we don't have a motion. Nobody will make a motion to approve. Do I have a motion to deny the annexation? Can I get a motion to deny the annexation? Come on, it don't matter.
I'll make a motion to deny the annexation.
And I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second. Okay.
So, I have a question then. So, if we do deny and they have the ability to arbitrate it, to overturn it, then what happens? Because my fear is I don't want us to lose this and then a development is just thrown together in that area.
I don't think that that would be the case. If it goes to arbitration and we lose, then they get, the annexation moves forward into the City of Stockbridge, and they can develop it according to the site map. So, we got a motion on the floor to deny, and we got a second. So, all in favor, raise your hand. All in favor.
I do, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Okay.
There's no action required on our part, correct?
There is no action required in the event of no objection, but we have in the past provided resolutions for objection to an annexation request.
But I'm saying, but we have to state the reason for our objection. Is that not correct?
I believe that's not correct.
We have to state a reason.
That is correct.
If we don't, if we don't take a vote on it, if we can't get a motion, say, for it, then the motion fails.
Because keep in mind, if you all, the only motion you all can take is to object. If you take no motion, we're reading it into the record as we are supposed to, and then it is approved.
Okay, so.
Have a reason for it.
But I've gotta, let me, so let me, let me pause for a second because y'all were in the middle of a motion, and I've gotta clean that up. So, I think we're gonna have to, because y'all were taking a vote and a question was asked. So, if whoever made the motion can rescind that motion, and then Chair, open it back up for discussion so that we can legally.
Rescinded.
Okay, all right, then, so what's the, is open for discussion? Okay, all right, then, so what's the, is open for discussion?
Reason for objection, fire safety, personnel.
Because we can't use traffic or as a reason for objections, correct?
So, you can't use traffic for reason, to object for rezoning request, not for the annexation. I think, obviously, public safety can certainly be a grounds for us to relay back to the city as a concern.
All right, so, can I get a motion to object to the annexation?
Motion to objection. Second.
Okay, so Johnny is going to second it. You made the motion, Johnny seconded it. All in favor, and, and all in favor of the objection to the annexation ratio. Okay?
Okay.
And the reason is for public safety and traffic.
Infrastructure impacts and fire safety.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good. County, county manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Or county attorney. Can, can we just make a comment as to when we talk about fire safety, what that means?
Fire safety means that there will be additional strain on county resources to ensure that they're able to deliver fire services. So, if the basis for the objection is fire safety, that's really what you're talking about. With this development coming on board, it will increase the strain on Henry County Fire and Rescue.
And, and, and to, am I allowed to, to speak, ma'am?
It, it depends on what you're trying to say there.
I just want to know if I can speak, you know? You know, because when we talk about fire safety, what I want the public to understand is that we provide fire services throughout the entire county. And even when, and, and our restrictions on townhome development is a little bit more stringent than what the cities may place on it. So, whereas we may require sprinklers throughout, they may not. And so, whereas we know the design of stuff that, that we approve, we don't necessarily know the design of what they approve. And it really puts our fire safety personnel at risk. And so, that's a huge concern, and, and will continue to be a huge concern for us. And so, the one thing that we're not going to do is put our, our fire fighters in any type of a risk. And so, we just want to make sure that people understand, when we talk about fire safety, it is a lot of different moving components to that, so.
And, and Madam Chair, because we're talking about the fire safety piece, I think it's important for those that are viewing and that are here tonight to understand, while we provide the response to those fire calls, the cities have their own fire marshals. And so, when plans come in for review, that, those plans are not being reviewed by Henry County, but we are expected to go in and provide those fire services, with the exception of the City of McDonough, who has their own fire services. But we do provide support to the City of McDonough.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It should also be addressed, we're working with our lobbyists to correct that, to make it a more consistent coding-based structure for all municipalities and counties aligned. So, moving forward, we hope for this not to be an issue.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the airport master plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. Before you have a resolution for the Board of Commissioners, awarding a proposal for consulting services for the Atlanta Motor Speedway and Airport Area Development Master Plan. The Parks and Department Solicited Proposals, RFP number twenty-five eighteen, for the Atlanta Motor Speedway and Airport Area Development Master Plan. Four responsible, responsive proposals were received, and the proposals were received, were, the proposals were received and scored by the Evaluation Committee. Cooper, Cooper Carey received the highest score. The Evaluation Committee recommends awarding an amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to Cooper Carey, and the funds are available through Opera Funds. Now, take any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson.
Has anyone had a conversation with Atlanta Motor Speedway?
No, so, as part of the proposal or the master plan, there will be a stakeholder committee, and so, they will be part of that committee. So, we just have, we haven't awarded anything yet to anybody, so we haven't gone that step yet.
So, they have no idea this is happening tonight, then?
Commissioner Wilson, I have spoken with Brandon Hutchinson via text regarding this agenda item. He did want more information in terms of what this master plan would do in terms of the Atlanta Motor Speedway. And to Mr. Kirk's point, he was told that he would be a stakeholder and be able to provide comments and feedback as it pertains to the Atlanta Motor Speedway and what impact the final document would have. So, yes, I have been in contact with him.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the airport master plan.
I move to approve the airport master plan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Those that oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is SPOS impact fees land.
Good evening, Chair Horell, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County citizens. Once Jamie gets my presentation up, we're going to have a resolution for improvements to the entrance of North Mount Carmel Park. So, the resolution is approving a change order for construction of the North Mount Carmel Park entrance improvements in the amount of six hundred and thirty-four thousand three dollars, using District Five impact fees. So, last year, the board awarded the construction contract for the Recreation Center in District Five to Cooper and Company, and there is a need to make improvements to the entrance of the park to accommodate the increased traffic that will be generated by the new Recreation Center. Cooper and Company provided a change order proposal to construct the park entrance improvements, and funding, as I said, is available in the District Five impact fees. This is a summary of the proposal. It breaks down the three, six hundred and thirty-four thousand three dollars, and this next picture shows the exact improvements that we plan to make to the entrance. There will be a left-turn lane off of North Mount Carmel going into the park. There will be a right-turn D cell lane going into the park. There will be a left-turn lane out of the park, a right-turn lane out of the park, with a center median where there will be a new park entrance sign. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a comment. Thank you so much. Anybody who lives in that area and goes on North Mount Carmel, especially during soccer tournaments, they understand how hard it is to get in and out of the park, and so, this is something that has been needed for a long time.
It's going to be significant, and it's also going to improve your site distance as you exit the park. And the contractor said that the entrance improvements will be done at the same time that the Recreation Center is complete.
This is awesome. If you go back to what Director Simmons was just talking about, this particular piece of roadway was just added to a speed reduction as well. So, the speed is going to drop from forty-five to thirty-five, so you're talking about a major improvement for this section of roadway. So, thank you.
Safety, yes.
Absolutely.
No other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of Henry County. I'm here to, for, to present the resolution to approve a temporary signal at the intersection of Oak Grove and Yodico. This signal is located, proposed signal is located in District Four. The intersection of Oak Grove and Yodico Road is in need of improvements due to the increase of traffic volumes and traffic congestion, frequent congestion. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for the temporary signal, bid number twenty-five dash thirteen. The lowest bid received was in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy dollars from Redwick LLC. Staff recommends the award of bid number twenty-five thirteen for a temporary signal at the intersection of Oak Grove Road and Yodico Road in that, in the amount, as I mentioned. Funds are available in District Four impact fees account. I will take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Price is in your district.
Just want to say thank you for that. I travel that road, and sometimes I need to go left, I make a right instead because of the congestion. So, thank you again for making this happen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we will approve the resolution for this temporary light, Oak Grove and Yodico.
One second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries, thank you. Next item?
Okay, next item is a resolution to approve a temporary, another temporary signal at the intersection of East Lake Road and Airline. This is located in District Three. The intersection, as, just as the previous one, is in need of improvements due to the increase of traffic volumes and frequent congestion. Seal bids were also solicited through the Purchasing Department for the temporary signal, bid number twenty-five dash twelve. Redwick LLC was also the lowest bidder in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Staff recommends the award of the bid, of the temporary signal at East Lake, at East Lake Road at Airline Road in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, not, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Funding for this intersection improvement will be coming from SPOS five account for, from District Three. I will take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rocky. Next item on, on the agenda, planning and zoning, AP twenty-four dash three. Pamela Strickland of Ellandwood, Georgia, requests an appeal to the approval of a conditional use for the property located at twenty-sixty-three. This was previously advertised as a public hearing. It is not a public hearing. This is an appeal, it's not a public hearing to the appeal. Is that correct, County Attorney? It's not a public hearing, correct?
That's correct. That's correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
I don't need that. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and members of the community. This is an appeal, oh, excuse me, an, an appeal by an adjacent property owner of a decision of the Zoning Advisory Board, which approved a conditional use permit for property located at twenty-sixty-three Panola Road. Originally, staff recommended approval of the Zoning Advisory Board's decision, but after additional review of the file and additional review of information provided by the appellant, I advise staff, that is my recommendation, that the decision of the ZAB be reversed instead. And the basis for my recommendation is because there were some, there were requirements that ZAB overlooked. The issue is that, it's with, the issue is with ownership of the property. So, the applicant submitted information representing that she individually was the owner of the property. A deeper dive into the documents revealed that it was a combination of two limited liability companies that actually own the property. So, her application was defective. And then, a second issue arose with notification of the appellant, who's one of the adjacent property owners. So, based on those two defects, ZAB should not have approved her application for conditional use. So, we're requesting that the board sustain the appeal that was brought, brought by Ms. Strickland and reverse the decision of the ZAB. Mr. Welch and I spoke earlier today, and we both concur that that's the right result in this particular appeal. And he represents the appellant, I'm sorry. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Um, no, this is not a public hearing, and you cannot speak from back there, ma'am. Andy, do you have?
Mr. Welch has provided documents that we want to submit for the record, so the record will be complete.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Andy Welch. I'm here representing Ms. Strickland and Itchaway LLC, the adjoining property owner. I concur with all the statements that were made by the county attorney. Those are the bases for our application, as this board is well aware and does a diligent job of making sure the public is duly informed of any decisions that are made that have a legal impact on the property rights of anyone in the county. Notice was not properly provided in this scenario. In addition, the application was not properly completed in accordance with your UDO. We've appealed that and asked for reversal of that decision by the ZAB. This information, I don't think, was apparent to the ZAB at the time, so it, with the amount of applications that your staff has to take in on a routine basis, it, it's enormous. And your staff does an excellent job of reviewing all of these things. It's really difficult to fly-spec every single application and cross-check that against the title records. Your staff trust that the applicant is representing the truth at the time of application, and they have to rely on that, because it's almost impossible to go back and double-check all those things. And on the notice issue, it really was a typo. The, the address, inadvertently, the seven was dropped out of the address, so it was not properly sent to the, the adjoining property owner's address. Nevertheless, the property owners have a, the adjoining property owners have a constitutional right, when you have a zoning ordinance that requires notice be provided to the adjoining address, to have a constitutional right to that notice, and this was not given. The county attorney has reviewed these items, the staff, I think, has reviewed these items, and accordingly, I think everybody's in concurrent, in concurrence on that, on those points. And again, we would ask that you reverse.
Commissioner Robinson, this is in your district.
Yes, thank you for both attorneys coming together on this. So, I make the motion to sustain the appeal and reverse the decision of the zoning advisory board.
So, we've got a, motion, can I get a second?
Second.
A second. And no other discussion? Okay, all in favor. A second. No other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Board.
Next item on the agenda is DRB Group LLC requesting appeal to the denial of a conditional use of property located at the northeast corner of intersection of Old Kellytown Road and Kibbe Road. This is an appeal hearing. It is not a public hearing.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the community. The request before you all this evening is an appeal to the denial of a conditional use for property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Old Kelly Road and Kibbe Road. The property consists of one hundred sixty-five point nine one plus or minus acres, and the request is for the appeal of a zoning advisory board decision regarding the denial of a conservation subdivision. Please see the aerial map before you, which shows the subject property outlined in green. The current zoning of the properties are A residential agricultural. Displayed is the survey provided by staff, provided to staff by the applicant. The applicant requested a conditional use, CU twenty-two oh eight, to develop a conservation subdivision. Conservation subdivisions are allowed within approved conditional use in any single-family residential zoning district to be developed up to the same number of units that would be permitted if developed with the conventional subdivision design. The lots are allowed by right to be as small as ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet with a minimum of forty percent of the area preserved for open space. With each application for a conservation subdivision, it is required for the applicant to provide a yield plan. The yield plan shows the maximum number of conforming building lots that is reasonably achievable. The yield plan indicates an allowable amount of two hundred nineteen lots with a minimum lot size of twenty-two thousand square feet on public sewer. The applicant has held community meetings to discuss concerns brought up by the community in the initial zoning advisory board meeting in July. The applicant provided of advised site plan dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, which you all can see above. This site plan shows a reduction in the number of lots to two hundred six and an increased landscape buffering to the south of the property line. The proposed development features lot sizes with twelve thousand square feet, eighteen thousand square feet, and twenty-two square feet lots. The subject property is currently zoned RA. The applicant requested a conditional use to develop a conservation subdivision. Planning and zoning staff recommended approval with conditions of the conditional use request at the July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four zoning advisory board meeting. At the time of evaluation, the proposed development met all of the criteria points for staff to make such recommendation. The zoning advisory board denied the request for the conditional use on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. An appeal was submitted on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four by DRB Group LLC, the aggrieved applicant, to the planning and zoning department. Planning staff recommends approval of the applicant's request for a conditional use for a conservation subdivision with the following condition. And I'm happy to take any questions you want me to have.
Are there any questions from the Board? Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district.
So, I'll just say appeals are very helpful a lot of times and they serve a very good purpose. And in this case, the purpose was to be able to have more conversation with the community, specifically Kellytown. So, understand that we pass this doesn't mean necessarily the next point of conversation passes. So, I do accept staff's, make staff recommendation on this.
So, are you making a?
Making the motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is RZ dash twenty-two dash twenty-two, DRB Group LLC of Fayetteville requesting a rezoning for, from RA residential agricultural to R two, single-family, family. Who's making that? Are you doing that presentation, Kenta?
Kenta's coming up, Madam Chair. Last item, we did allow the applicant an opportunity to enter any information into the record. I think staff presented, Commissioner Anglin spoke, and we didn't allow the applicant to just agree or disagree.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Okay. Is there an applicant here that want to say something?
And it can just be a matter of agreeing with staff, but we just need to enter something into the record because it's an appeal.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty, Keysbury Court, McDonough. Yes, we're perfectly fine and happy and thankful for the opportunity to proceed to the next step and take the reversal of the, or the appeal, to approve the appeal for the conditional use.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, citizens of Henry County, and pillars of the community. The item before you is property located on Old Kellytown Road and Kibbe Road, approximately one hundred and sixty-five point nine one plus or minus acres. And the property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural with a future land use map designation of low-density suburban. The request before you is to rezone the subject property from RA residential agricultural to R two sewer, single-family residence, for the purpose of that conservation subdivision. This is the yield plan that was submitted by the applicant. Again, the yield plan is the maximum number of lots that the site would be able to hold. This site plan, rather, the yield plan indicates a maximum yield of two hundred and nineteen lots. This is that conservation plan shown earlier, which shows the two hundred and six lots with varied lot sizes. Here are some comments that we've received from various departments on this subject With that, the applicant is requesting to rezone that property from RA to R two sewer with that future land use map designation of low-density suburban, supporting up to two dwelling units per net acre. The proposed development is intended to be that conservation subdivision with that breakdown of the lot sizes and number of lots. Going back to that site plan, we see some of those larger lots being shown on Kibbe Road, along Kibbe Road, those yellow lots there at eighteen thousand square feet, kind of internal to the subdivision, and elsewhere, those purple lots showing the twelve thousand square foot lots. And again, that minimum lot size with conservation subdivisions can be as small as ten eight ninety. The applicant is going well and above that minimum lot size. Here are some elevations that were submitted by the applicant. And once again, that site plan, conservation plan. On July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, the zoning advisory board did recommend denial of the applicant's request for rezoning. At that time, staff provided a recommendation of approval, and we are doing so again tonight with the seventeen conditions shown on the screen. I want to add that condition thirteen regarding a fence along the south property line has been added to the recommended conditions list after publishing the initial case packet. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll wait until after the public hearing. Persons wish to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, have a collective total of ten minutes to address the Board.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty, Keysbury Court, here tonight representing DRB on the rezoning of this property. The, the yield plan, I think, was pretty well discussed, but it does communicate the ability and the capacity that the property has for that, for that number of lots of two hundred and nineteen lots. This plan has gone through several iterations since our last time, or since being in front of the zoning advisory board. But this last plan, the plan that the zoning advisory board reviewed was two hundred and twelve lots, and then the plan that we are presenting to you tonight is two hundred and six lots. So, we've made a steady progress down in number. Another key component of the change to this plan is related to access. The previous plan had two access points to Kellytown, Old Kellytown Road. It had another access to Kellytown Road at the north, but it was just a small cul-de-sac with some, with few lots, no interconnectivity. This plan proposes to eliminate one of those entrances to Old Kellytown Road and interconnect the two accesses to alleviate and minimize the impact to the traffic at the intersection of Old Kellytown Road and Kellytown Road. So, we think that's a big improvement to this plan. So, we chose R two for this project just based on its consistency and with the adjacent community. So, the Brook Hollow subdivision to the east is also zoned R two. However, it is on septic, which requires larger lots. So, we have the same zoning district. It's just a matter of the fact that we have a sewer line that runs through the property, which is why we're eligible and to have a smaller, a somewhat smaller lot under the same zoning district. But as I'm, as Kenta mentioned, we have three different designed lot sizes. The largest lots are those that back up to Kibbe Road. Those are the one hundred and fifteen-foot wide lots. They're about a half of an acre apiece. Some of them are larger than that. And then, as you move to the north, along the main spine roads that connect, that provide a majority of the access, the lots get slightly smaller. Those are a hundred-foot wide lots. They would be eighteen thousand square foot minimum. And then, on the interior of the project is where you'll find the eighty-foot wide lots. And again, to Kenta's point, the minimum lot size in conservation is a quarter, a quarter of an acre, ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet. These are slightly larger in that they're minimum of twelve thousand feet up to fifteen thousand square feet. But there are, as a conservation subdivision, there is a requirement of a forty percent of the site to be set aside as open space. We have forty-three and a half percent set aside, almost seventy-two acres, over seventy-two acres, with significant buffering around the perimeter of the property, and three amenity centers that are centrally located within the development. And I can just generally describe the features that would be in each of those amenity areas. This is the central amenity area with the open-air pavilion. And then, in the far eastern section, a dog park, another pavilion, grilling areas, seating areas, and then the, obviously, in the first one was the resort-style pool. And then, here's just some renderings of that amenity center. And so, there's been a lot of discussion in several of the community meetings that have been had, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about that, but been a lot of discussion about bringing something different to this area, specifically to the Kellytown area. And Commissioner Anglin has made, you know, no bones about it, that his expectations are high. And so, I want to bring Carrie Smith up. Carrie is the Director of Land Acquisitions for DRB, and talk about some of the changes that have occurred with DRB and, and just, then we'll show you kind of some of the architectural products that we're going to propose for this project.
Steve, good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Carrie Smith. I work for the applicant, DRB Group, Georgia, and I appreciate your consideration of our request this evening. Little bit of reintroduction. DRB Homes came to Georgia in twenty-twenty-one by acquiring Knight Homes, who I'm sure many of you know do a lot of business in Henry County. And since then, there's been a big turnover in leadership, but also, more excitingly, in our product portfolio. We have new leaders in almost every department across the company who have implemented a series of best practices and improvements to our community outreach, sales and marketing, internal underwriting and due diligence, as well as our development and construction standards and best practices. This effort really was initiated in twenty-twenty-two and over the last two years has unfolded as more new leadership has joined the company. Next slide. As for product, since the acquisition, we have been building primarily legacy plans, which were Knight Homes plans. So, most of the homes that you see in this area are not actually DRB Homes, and it's been a big effort to incorporate those new DRB plans into the Atlanta portfolio. By twenty-twenty-five, we are hoping that all new communities are incorporating solely DRB product and will also be building a design studio, and this community will be one of the first that will be serviced by that design studio, which will allow home buyers to customize their home and really turn it into their dream home. We also are hoping that the new elevations that we're showing this evening bring something different to Henry County, because we hope to do a lot of business here and be good neighbors. And in all of the community meetings that we had, which we've had a lot, and I've really appreciated the opportunity to get input from the community, I think we've had a lot of success in showing these and we hope to build them here. So, thank you very much, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Carrie. So, these are the products that Carrie was mentioning, and I just felt like it was good for Carrie to be able to speak on the topic of this change, and these are the North Atlanta product brought to Henry County. So, these are the larger lots. These are all side-entry garages. These will be on the largest one hundred and fifteen-foot wide lots. And then, this will also feature some ranch and single-story products as well. And then, on the hundred-foot lots, again, side-entry products on all of these homes, but a mix of materials, blended materials, different roof pitches, steeper roof pitches to capture their, the architectural style that DRB is going for. This, again, offers some single-story and half, one and a half-story products. And then, on the eighty-foot lots, again, just mix of shake cedar, rock, rock and brick accents, and that's it. So, there is a video here, hopefully we'll play, that is kind of a drive-through of what this community is intended to represent. The, while that's playing, the houses in the one hundred and fifteen-foot section are proposed to be thirty-five hundred square foot minimum. Within the hundred-foot section, three thousand square foot heated space minimum, and in the eighty-foot section, twenty-six hundred square foot heated space. So, there has been, as Carrie mentioned, significant engagement with the community, and I know I'm running out of time, and there's a couple people in favor of this. I hope I have time for them to present. Three community meetings, dozens of one-on-one meetings. This slide is intended to represent some of the results of that interaction. The fence, the additional, the agreement to supplement the existing buffers with additional landscaping to provide screening, increased buffer width from fifty to seventy-five feet, coordinating with the downstream property owners on some stormwater-related issues, a traffic study being performed prior to a condition requiring it, and then even the opportunity for the neighboring residents to be a part of the, and enjoy the amenities that are proposed within this community. So, with that, I'm going to stop talking and ask if the person speaking in favor of would have a chance to talk. Thank you.
Is there anyone here in, that lives in that community that wants to come forward and just say a few words, whether you support it or if you support this particular project? All y'all that support it, come up. Let me see what you look like. Come on.
Hey, I'm a landowner, and I'm probably going to be the most affected landowner.
Okay.
I own that entire buffer line that says seventy-five feet. So, I have had no neighbors for thirty years, and I'm fixing to get about twenty.
So, are you here to speak in favor of it?
Well, I'm saying I'm in favor now because of, I've met with DRB Homes several times about my- about my concerns. I'm a widow. I live on this land by myself. I felt comfortable. I have asked them to put up, leave as many trees as possible, a buffer. Um, I'm asked for that fence for security. Um, but I just want you to know that if it, if it's gonna happen, they have been very willing to work with me. Um, and I'm speaking for me. I'm a landowner. I'm not talking about my subdivision. Um, Kibbie Road people behind me are probably not liking me saying all this, but I am the most day-to-day, twenty-four-seven landowner that's gonna be affected with this. So, I just want to give you my perspective of it. I would prefer it not to happen, but if it does, they have made concessions that I'm willing to work with. Okay?
Awesome. Anyone else? Anyone else who want to come and say a few words in favor? If not, then Stephanie, we will reset the clock and, uh, allow for anyone that wants to come and speak in opposition of it that lives in the Kellytown area. And if you could say your name and address.
All right. Good evening, Madam Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioners on the board, pillars of the community. My name is Amanda Flora. I am a lifelong resident of Henry County, and I currently reside at fifty-four Kibbie Road. I'm gonna be as quick as I can, because I know I have a lot of neighbors that want to speak, but I disagree with my neighbor who just spoke this. She's gonna be the most effective, because I currently live at the second house on Kibbie Road. And I actually printed out, I am old-school, so I don't know if y'all want to look at this, but I printed out, specifically where it's gonna affect me is I'm on five-and-a-half acres, okay? Every single neighbor on Kibbie Road that is going to be affected by the houses at the beginning of this development are on two-plus acres. My neighbor's two, I'm five-and-a-half, my neighbor next to me's four-and-a-half, the next neighbor's thirteen, the next neighbor's five, the next neighbor's almost eight, the next neighbor's almost seven, the next neighbor is seven, the next neighbor, and it goes on and on. Nobody has a half-an-acre lot. Short story is, I bought this house in two thousand and nineteen. I grew up going to this house as my friends' parents owned this house. I have lived in this county, and I've watched the development. I've appreciated the growth up to a point, and I am sick. I cannot enjoy the amenities that are being put in this community because of the traffic that I have to do to enjoy them. I appreciate the growth that the county leaders have brought here, but at this time, I'm unable to enjoy it. When I pull out of my driveway, I currently look at a field of beautiful grass. It is empty, but it's nice and peaceful. I will pull out of my driveway and look at the back of a two-story monstrosity house, likely with a cement patio with somebody's grill and probably junk on the back of it. And I'm just not gonna enjoy my property, and I understand that that's a personal thing, and that doesn't go into your decision. But what I want you to know is that I bought this property specifically because it was rural. I have watched the publics be built. I have watched the senior facility be built. I watched the first White House in Henry County get torn down. I was lucky enough to get the door from that house. As the history, I grew up riding my four-wheeler in that area, down Kellytown Road, which my five-year-old son obviously cannot do at this point. I'm concerned about the growth. I'm concerned about the school. The only update we have from the developer was from twenty-twenty-two. In twenty-twenty-two, this development was gonna produce enough students to require six new classrooms in the elementary school there. That would be trailers. We don't have an update, and it's two years later. So, I'm anxious to see how many now and what impact that will have on our students in Henry County. I would ask that you deny it.
Thank you, Ms. Flora.
Hi, Steve Gill, and I'm, uh, I'm down the road on, uh, on Kellytown. I'm the one that just has this out to you. Uh, I'm just gonna go over the first couple of pages real quick. I've got the Better Business Bureau, uh, for some of this stuff that has been happening for, uh, from, uh, DRB. Uh, they've got an F-rating. Gonna go over that. We've got a, uh, petition that went on with five-hundred-and-twenty people. This is on page two. Uh, the guy that ran the petition is not here right now, and I can't get the Q code to get the petition out of it. But there's five-hundred-and-twenty people in opposition. Now, if you go to page three, it shows where this has improved it a little bit. It shows the, uh, no outlet to the whole area. If you go down the street to Kibbie, it says, uh, no, it says dead-end. It is a one-area road. Uh, it, the area on the map that showed that it had the south end with a road up to one-fifty-five, did, doesn't exist for a few, for a couple of years. It's overgrown. That's on the fourth page. Uh, you can see where the, where it's has it coming, oh, over there. Okay, if you, and the next page is two thousand and twenty-two, you've got your criteria listed. This is, uh, for DRB versus, uh, Henry County. They both had their initials on it, and it says the, it has to have the study on transportation. You've got fifty, roughly fifty houses on the area right now on the Kibbie side and what's left of Old Kellytown, uh, down on the south side. Uh, so, you've got fifty, fifty houses, and now you've got two-hundred-and-six now, I guess, in going into there. That's a, a hundred cars versus four-hundred cars. Even with the additional, which is good, which is a good thing, even with the addition of the one exit onto Kellytown, you've still got four-hundred cars going out to Kellytown. That's a big difference, and according to the, uh, criteria put out in twenty-two, they have to have the study done before they get it, uh, taken care of. Something I haven't seen here that was brought up, uh, before is the tower. It's a hundred-and-eighty-five-foot tower. It's supposed to, uh, it's supposed to have room to fall and not interfere with any, uh, properties. And the way it was, I don't know what it is now, it would have hit nine of them, which is, again, against the twenty-two paperwork. We, I've gone through this quite a bit. Uh, that's on, that's on the page about two-thirds of the way down. I wish I'd, uh, numbered these, but that, that's on there. Uh, the only thing that, uh, I've got left is to drop it off to next, because I'm running out of time, and I want to get Connie Snow in too.
Uh, my name is Deron Moore. I try to keep this as brief as possible since we got, um, some more people to speak. But as I look at this, uh, picture up here, it says community engagement. Um, I'd like to know what community that was, because I live in Watkins Glen, and nobody came down to Watkins Glen to talk to Watkins Glen's, uh, residents about this. We are affected by this because of the traffic, uh, the schools and everything else. Um, this is two-hundred-and-six, uh, homes. You have a senior home, which I expect have about a hundred, two-hundred, uh, apartments in there. They're building another community down the street on Miller's Mill, which is about two-hundred, I mean, I'm sorry, which is about two miles down the road, which has another hundred fifty-plus houses. Um, all that traffic, I'd just like to know, when are we gonna think about the traffic that's gonna be in the area, the schools that's gonna be impacted? If you go down to one-fifty-five and East Atlanta, I mean, yeah, East Lake, now that traffic backs up all the way past the Dollar, the Dollar Store, uh, and that's just now. They haven't finished the community behind the Whataburger, the community down the street on, on East Lake. Um, it's gonna be a tremendous impact on the families that's already there and the new families.
Sir, please don't, yeah.
Airline. I'd just like you to consider the impact that it's gonna have on the residents, the current residents and the potential future residents. Are we gonna think about the traffic and the congestion after the fact, or are we gonna do it before the fact? As I sit here and listen, we had several, um, presentations in here where we was trying to go behind and fix the traffic flow. Why not fix it beforehand? Thank you.
Sir, what was your name again? I'm sorry, you didn't say what your name is.
Uh, Deron Moore.
You said.
Deron, D-E-R-O-N, Moore. I live in Watkins, Watkins Glen subdivision, four-thirty-three, Hoxmore Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Hi, Connie Snow at four-twenty-six Chase Marion Way, McDonough, Georgia. I'm also with Conserv Henry. I know we're running out of time, so I'm gonna make this quick. On ten-twenty-four, there was a special called meeting with the Water Authority, where it was brought to everybody's attention, that the Water Authority was at capacity, as well as we needed new and additional sewer lines, and we needed to increase existing sewer lines to accomplish builds that had been approved. It's also noted at that meeting that the Water Authority or the School Board had not been brought in ahead of time before multiple developments, and that this is gonna create a public safety nightmare and welfare issue for the county. On eleven-twelve, I attended a meeting at the City of Stockbridge for an annexation. Chair, Chair Harrell has signed a resolution trying to deny it for two-point-six acres of land due to public safety concerns and welfare concerns.
Ma'am, your time is up. Turn the mic off, and we're going to move on to questions and, uh, comments. So, Kenta. I know that there were some questions.
I can address them.
Okay, uh, but I want to address one thing. First of all, let me be clear. The county is not out of water. Uh, matter of fact, we are in a very good position. So, a lot of times, people take contents of a meeting and only tell a portion of that. We're in very good shape when it comes to water and sewer. We just want to make sure that as we bring developments into this county, that, uh, we're all communicating with each other, uh, so there is no, um, shortage of water or sewer capacity. That's why developments have to go to the Water Authority to get approval. That's why they get a letter from the School Board to make sure that there is still capacity in the schools. And the question that I have for you, uh, Kenta, is, was a transportation study done? I wanted to, um, that was one thing that one of the constituents said, something about a transportation study that had not been done. So, I want to know, has that transportation study, uh, been done, or is it in process?
Yes, Chair, it has been done. Um, Kim Lee Horn, uh, engineering firm that, uh, the applicant, uh, engaged, performed that. Again, done in advance of, of this meeting's. Typically, it's a result of a condition that's imposed, uh, that gets done, but that study was done. I have this, just the conclusion page. Unfortunately, that engineer's not here to talk about all of the details, but I will say that in their conclusion section, based on the results of the traffic study, all intersections currently operate at an acceptable level of service, both in AM and PM peak hours, under the projected twenty-thirty, uh, no build and build conditions, which is the build-out date expected for this project. All studied intersections, including the proposed site driveway, are projected to continue to operate at an acceptable level of service during AM and PM, uh, peak hours. And that's based on the county's level of service, uh, expectations.
Okay. And then, the, uh, other question I had was with regards to the tower.
Yes.
Can you address that?
So, there is a cell tower on the subject property. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's, um, kind of, yes, and Steve will point out, point it out. Um, according to our records, uh, that, that cell tower has a height of a hundred-and-eighty-five feet. Uh, by code in chapter seven of our ULDC, uh, those dwellings that are on adjacent properties next to the cell tower, um, let me go back. Uh, the code for new cell towers has a distance requirement from the base of the cell tower to the nearby, uh, adjacent dwelling units. That distance is a hundred-and-ten percent of the cell tower. Uh, that is actually made a condition, um, as per condition eight of staff's recommended conditions. Uh, no dwelling unit, uh, shall be within a hundred-and-ten percent of that cell tower height.
Okay. So, it won't be in a dwelling within the required?
That is correct, within the code specified, a hundred-and-ten percent height of the tower.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Anglin, this is, uh, in your district.
So, I'm gonna start with, uh, answering the questions that came from our Kellytown folks, and then I want to go in and make some comments, please. So, the first one, uh, and Carrie may want to make some comments of this, this document here, which we have reference to, uh, they spoke about this at the town hall meeting, of which this is not the DRB site for them. I want to be clear of that. Is that correct, Carrie?
That's right.
Come to the microphone. We can't speak from back there.
Yes. So, after we did hear, um, several people bring up the F-rating on Better Business Bureau, we looked into it further. As it turns out, it was actually, uh, that page was started by a Knight Homes.
Excuse me, excuse me. You can take that outside, but we, we are carrying on the meeting. So, if you all need to talk, you all need to excuse yourself.
Thank you. Um, so, we looked into it further, and the page that has the F-rating was started and administered by an ex-Night Homes employee who's no longer with DRB or Knight Homes. And per the Better Business Bureau, if the complaints go unanswered, that's what causes the F-rating. There is another page, um, DRB Group Georgia LLC, which is our appropriate entity, which has an A-minus rating on Better Business Bureau, and DRB is currently in the process of getting the other page taken down, which has taken us a couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we cleared that up. Um, and that was Steve's question. The towers, we already answered. Uh, Deron had some questions about DRB. Y'all hosted, I believe, can you tell us how many town halls y'all hosted there in the community?
There was three, three community meetings that were public, like, town hall meetings, uh, two in-person, one virtual, and then, uh, the DRB team has had dozens of smaller group sessions with various neighborhood groups.
Okay, so we had those. Uh, we addressed the traffic. Thank you, Kenta. Uh, with that being said, to Mrs. Snow's, part of the reason we are here with this subdivision is because of the big sewer line that runs right through the middle there that was provided for the publics that you see in the top left-hand corner. Uh, so, that has, uh, provided this avenue, uh, by having that sewer capacity there. Wouldn't you agree with that, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, with that being said, I'm gonna make my, my comments now. So, first and most importantly, thank you to Kellytown. Uh, we have worked together very hard, and y'all have brought a lot of comments. I was there at the last meeting. I have taken calls from folks who live off Kibbie Road in the, in the area, and I think something unique in this time, uh, was that Carrie of DRB actually met with folks in their homes. I have never had that experience before. This is not me advocating for them, let me be very clear. But, thank you for going out of your way to meet with individuals in their home. That means a lot to me in District Three. I will say, the first meeting that I had with y'all, I'm sure I put a lot of demands and a lot of restrictions on what y'all are gonna do in District Three and in Kellytown. Uh, and that has a lot to do with the fact that we did not want night products here in District Three. Um, and we had some conversations around that, and I wanted to make sure DRB, per the renderings we've got now, brought their North Side product here. With that being said, they also hired an architect to help provide the new renderings, of which are now available for us to use here in this subdivision, if we so feel that. I was the one that asked, I wanted a greater variety of product mix, and I wanted the additional lot sizes, especially the half-acre, which is extremely unusual to have in a conservation subdivision. You don't usually see a lot of half-an-acre with that. Um, with that, I will say the things that DRB has done, uh, they did reduce the number of lots, which the yield plan called for two-nineteen. which the yield plan called for 219. They went to 212. We pushed harder. We got to 206. They did increase the buffers per request of Kellytown residents at the meeting, especially that southern border with, from 50 feet to 75 feet, and we got the other road buffers at 100 feet. Preserved not 40% of the required minimum green space. We bumped it up to 43% to capture some additional green space. They did use the Master Parks Plan, which we have passed and have in place. And then they went back and added trails per request of myself. With that being said, they added the fence, to which she made mention a second ago, to border the Kiby Road area to prevent folks from trespassing or going over that. Also, there's going to be a locked entrance through that easement of the power lines that was asked for by the folks there as well. There was mentioned that we wanted to make sure this was owner-occupied housing. When they came to us, it was at 10%. It is actually, we're going to reduce that rental rate to 5%, not 10%, which is what the residents asked for. We did, once again, use those half-acre lots to better buffer Kiby Road. A large part of those lots will probably not be touched. And they were wanting to possibly use the buffer within that, and we, once again, went to bat, and I told them the buffer absolutely would not be within the landowner's lot, that we wanted additional green space. They did move the entrances, if y'all remember right, the Kellytown residents. Both of the entrances were originally on Kellytown Road. That did not work for traffic flow for the folks that I know that live on Kellytown Road and Kiby Road. So therefore, with conversations, we were able to move that entrance up to Kellytown Road. I did mention the new home designs. They did, once again, hire a new architect and new staff to make sure we got those taken care of. With that being said, the bigger concern that I have that the Kellytown residents may not be aware of is, right here, is a list of other developers that have already been calling me numerously, waiting for this appeal to have not moved forward. That is concerning. We have someone who is willing to work with the community and has shown that. We won't have that with the folks on this next list that I've got right here. With that, I'll yield to the other commissioners for any questions or comments before there are any motions made.
Any comments from any commissioners?
I don't have any at this time. I'm moving.
Okay. There's no other comments.
With that, the rental cap being at 5%, I make a motion that we may forward.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. For the discussion, all in favor.
Chair, sorry, quickly, quick interruption. Regarding the amenity package, I do apologize for that. I want to, with the addition of those walking trails, I wanted to codify that within the conditions. And with that, along with Condition 15, A, B, C, D, with that new addition, I wanted to have that language read, walking trails throughout the development shown on that site plan, conscripted of compacted earth trails, meeting the Building and Plan Review Department. Just wanted to put that language in there.
Stephanie, did you hear that? Okay. We got a motion and a second, all in favor. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. County manager comments?
Yes.
Okay. Stephanie, anyone sign up for public comment? Okay. I need to make a motion for approval of the minutes for October 24th joint board meeting with the Water Authority and the Development Authorities. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor. Okay. The next item is that I'd like to make a motion. Okay. I have not forgot, County Manager. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to create an ordinance regarding the development of data centers. Can I get a second on that one?
Second.
All in favor. Motion carries. The next motion that I'd like to direct staff to bring forth a resolution regarding the acceptance of applications of review regarding comprehensive plan amendments. I am requesting that we limit the acceptance of the Comp Plan Amendment applications to one time a year. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor. Motion carries. Our upcoming meetings announcements, the following regularly scheduled VLC meetings for December have been canceled. The first meeting in 2025 is January 7th, at, for January 7th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.